All Factory. So, Tim is here from Old Factory brewing. Looked the building, there was garage door on the left, he replaced the garage door with four glass doors. Um, the building department was requiring him to come through the planning board to get approval to replace the one door with the other doors. Um, again, this is something that I'm going to request a waiver of public hearing because it didn't change the footprint. Doesn't really impact anything outside of improve the aesthetics of the building. I got motion to wait for the hearing. All four. I guess motion will prove. Second?
Second.
All four. Alright, welcome.
So, we just started to think after a bit of the cover letter that we submitted, we haven't yet changed anything in the submission from the last mission that I did for that full presentation, um, at the last meeting. Yeah, so we haven't updated anything in the application, um, for the site plan since the last meeting when I did that full presentation in the run group. Uh, we are diligently working through crafting responses to all agency letters that we've received so far. So we have one for County Planning, for PDC, um, all the public comments we've received in writing and at the last public hearing and then the relative.
So, just so you're all aware, the public hearing is going to continue afterwards. They're just presenting to the board and going over some items. Everything will still be presented to the public after the day meeting with us. I'm just giving her the microphone so that we hear better here and so, you know, trying to attempt to have all of you hear what they're doing, knowing that it's not a full conversation. We're not answering questions right now, but once they finish this portion of it, we will then have the public hearing portion.
Can we turn it up?
The meeting will require you to hear everything that's transpired.
This is as loud as I can get this machine to go. If anybody else knows something about sound, I would.
Just ask her to speak into the microphone.
If everybody can please refrain from talking so that everybody can hear it, I'd appreciate it.
So, we are not presenting any new information tonight. Uh, the application and the site plan have not been updated. As stated, we did make a cover letter submission prior to this meeting, um, that should be on record that explains this. Uh, we have documented the agency comments that we have received so far from DEC and Green County Planning. We're working on responses to those as well as public comments that we received in writing that were forwarded to us by the board. Uh, and at the last public hearing on March 7th. So we're responding to those, we're working on responses to those as well as the amendments to the plans and all the supplementary reports. Um, that we need to do to answer those questions, uh, fully and completely. So that is why we do not have new material for here, you here tonight. Um, but we know the board wanted, since we focused very much on the public hearing at the last meeting, we wanted to come to answer any questions the board has. Um, on the, on the material that you have before you and to continue the public hearing and continue to kind of take those comments. Um, and add them to what we will be responding to in our next submission.
Beth, we have any questions at this time?
Um, we are going to give us more information about the water situation.
Yeah.
We'll get on that.
Yes, we will.
Beth asked if they were going to present more on the water, on the water treatment facility and they said they're still working on it. Correct, the town engineer is still working through the project and doesn't have a fight against it.
Yeah, um, so the question was, will we give specific measurements? So there was, I guess I just want to clarify, there was the regulations that we are held to. Yeah, so we have those, but was there other measurements or numbers? We will be kept to those that were in our last submission. We'll, we'll prove that again in our next submission, but like that, of the discharge levels.
One measure of discharge in the Shingle Hill.
Uh huh. Correct, so we're talking. Yes. Yes, so we got that table and I will put it again in the description. So the question was, it is a protected creek, the Shingle Hill is a CTS, a trout spawning creek. So it has specific levels that any discharge that goes into it will have to be cleaned to. And so what we have so far in our materials that we submitted before the February meeting. March meeting, sorry, before the March meeting, the March 7th meeting, um, that was a table provided to us by DEC saying these are the levels that you will be held to for a CTS creek.
And then what happens is we will end up designing backwards, so we'll design to that criteria. Everything will be submitted to you, to your engineer and then to PDC for their review. So we'll continue to evolve DEC on the design of that waste water treatment plan and of course, everything will actually work.
Both will be one and one, could you try to. And they all are at water treatment.
Correct, you're, you're correct, yes, yeah. Yeah, so when you start a discharge interior source, the first step. When you design, um, a waste water treatment system, and it's discharging into a state regulated water source, the first step is to approach DEC and find out to what standards you have to design to. And so that was that first step that we took. And so from there, we'll design backwards and design that waste water treatment plan to those standards. So your answer is, or your question is, is, um, well, uh, well requested and so that information is forthcoming.
So everything that's in your design, the land must be a hundred feet from the high water mark at any of the current.
I don't have the specifics of those requirements, yeah. Whenever. So we have Crawford Engineering, they're, they're the engineers in charge of the water and the sanitary. And I know they're very familiar with the requirements in this area, so they'll design to whatever those standards are and we'll provide you with a copy of that report, which will also go to DEC.
So, I know, I know you, you have an understanding that any construction has to be a hundred feet from the high water mark. So we'll have our water insider team respond to that question directly. Whether or not that's a standard held here and what creeks and where.
So these right here, are these the old drains or is this just like new hills or? I know it was prior, on the map prior to that.
This is grading, these are grading lines, is what you're seeing here, so.
Yeah, it's just like a bump in dirt.
Like we tried to burn and hide this parking facility of the unit on site.
So this is being called, so that whole of the water, this is just a preliminary layout of water and so all of the lines were, um, reportedly functioned to that area.
So this is the point in this, that we're doing a test for to kind of see yield, um, and water quality of that well. And then these other ones are potential identified as, potential identified well, that means a criteria setback from property boundaries.
So what was stated is the, the lines with the W's are where they exist, the proposed water lines may go and. The, the S is for the sanitary lines of the subject essentially. And then they pointed out the one existing well and then pointed out potential areas for a few more wells. Um, all this is understood that it is still in blocks that may work out.
Yes, so there's actually four of these involved on site, we're only showing one because the other three have already kind of been ruled out because they're too close to the property boundaries or. Yeah, so they're showing that they're not, you know, they're not identified.
So there's.
Four wells.
Four wells on site, three of them they've ruled out that they don't want to use because they're too close to property boundaries.
You don't yet know the gaps of those proposed well things.
We really need the sound higher.
We can't hear you and this is in violation of open government laws, this is an open public hearing, we need to be able to hear.
This is just to be clear, this isn't a public hearing yet, the public hearing is going to happen after.
We all showed up to learn and hear.
We want to know the details.
It is a public.
Everything back to us that she said to you, I mean, that would make us part of the public.
Right, so I just repeated every, if everybody can please be quiet, I repeated everything that she said to me. She just said a comment and if you let me, I'm going to continue to do so so everybody can hear. I'm doing the best with the equipment that we have right now, I obtained a microphone, which is the best that the town has. I personally thought that they had better equipment, but I am going to look into before the next meeting to see if we can get something that's louder. If everybody can please cooperate and we will have the public hearing where everybody can comment after this, but we do need everybody to please keep quiet. We'll take public comment after the board has done work.
I have probably a better system than that.
So do I.
We need to be able to hear you, it's a public meeting.
It's the law.
It's the law.
So, the question before us was, do you know the depth of the proposed wells? And they do not know the answer to that question yet and they are still working through the engineering.
And we understand what the public hearing, open hearing law is. We are working with the equipment we have, if you have a proposal for the Town of Carroll where we can hold these meetings in a better facility with louder acoustics, please let the town know because, I mean, we don't own this building, we had to borrow it from the school district.
Excuses.
Not our obligation.
Your obligation.
Not a problem, I with the law.
And just, the last two meetings, there's been a lot of you versus us. We, the planning board, work for the town, we're working for you. So I don't know why there's this angst all of a sudden that we're against Round Top, we are Round Top, we are terrible. So, we're working through the proposals as best we can.
We don't inflict it.
We've been doing this a while, nobody on this board is new, we're trying to do the best we can, just bear with us. We are not closing the public hearing tonight, there is not going to be construction started tomorrow, I guarantee you that.
It already has.
Frank Alguizine?
My name is Frank Alguizine and I served as Green County's Director of Real Property Tax Services for thirty years. And, um, I've got something I've written here, um, it can get a little confusing at times, if you can't hear me, let me know. But what I want to try and do tonight is shed some light on what this project's impact will be on property, school and fire district taxes. It seems most people think that property and school taxes are generated similarly to sales tax. However, sales tax is generated based upon a percentage of retail sales and various services. The more sales and services, the more tax revenue. The property and school taxes are based upon municipal budgets. The formula is appropriations minus revenues minus estimated state aid equals the amount to be raised by taxes, subject to tax caps. Increases in assessments do not increase dollars to the county, towns, school districts or fire districts. It just changes the distribution of the tax burden. The truth is that the added assessment that this project might bring to the Town of Carroll Assessment Hall will actually mean that the town will pick up a larger portion of the county tax and the Carroll Durham school tax. It is done to a complicated tax apportionment process based in New York State tax laws. I apportioned county and school taxes throughout Green County for nearly three decades. I am not going to try and explain it now, but if anyone is a glutton for punishment and wants to learn more about the process, let me know. I recently completed an analysis for Friends of Round Top using a hypothetical five percent tax savings to the town portion of the January tax bill that everyone in the Town of Carroll receives. A similar impact can actually be seen if any taxpayer in the Town of Carroll looks at the January tax bill they received this past January and compares it to the bill they received January of 2023, a little over a year ago. There should be a reduction in the town tax of approximately five percent depending upon other factors that may influence. Like a senior or a veteran's exemption or a change in assessment of a specific property. It's not an impressive tax difference one year to the next by any stretch of the imagination and probably nobody in this room even saw it. Or was thrilled that they were writing a check this year that might have been a little bit smaller. The reason for this reduction was due to an error in the town's 2023 budget preparation process regarding a tax cap calculation. Rumor has it that some folks are supporting this project based upon what they see as being a big tax windfall. I would be interested in hearing the specifics of their suggestion or knowing what I am missing. So what would the developers have to build to realize a five percent minor reduction in town taxes? They would have to make real property taxable improvements that after any exemption or special tax treatment totals an uncontested full value of fifty-two million dollars. Keep in mind at this point that the current full value assessment of the Blackhead Mountain Resort is three million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The current resort pays approximately fifty-four thousand in property and school taxes. The new resort with a fifty-two million dollar full value would have to pay approximately eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That's nearly an eight hundred thousand dollar increase. I don't believe this is going to happen. If this kind of tax was projected on this new resort, I don't think they would be considering it. I will add here that my analysis did not take into consideration the fact.
Got a lot of powder mic, if you don't mind, I'm just going to have to stand back here a little bit. Thank you.
I gotta start over. Okay, um, backing up just a little bit, the new resort with a fifty-two million dollar full value would have to approximately pay eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That's an eight hundred thousand dollar increase. I don't believe this is going to happen. If this kind of tax was projected on this new resort, I don't think they would be considering it. I will add here that my analysis did not take into consideration the fact that the current Blackhead Mountain Resort is paying taxes resulting in my estimates being on the low side of what the new resort assessment and full value would actually have to be. For those of you who are still not convinced and want to ask, how do I know it won't be assessed for fifty-two million dollars full value? And they won't be paying eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in taxes? Let's take a quick look at what would have to be built on the property and fully taxed without any exemptions or special tax treatment. The scenario I'm about to share involves how many homes, I know they're not building homes, would have to be built. It's a comparative analysis, however, I believe you will understand that whatever is ultimately built, rentals or timeshares or condos or a form of limited liability organization will never come close to fifty-two million dollars. I, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. In order to attain fifty-two million dollars, the math is quite simple. They would have to build fifty-two one million dollar homes. They would have to, or they would have to build one hundred and four half million dollar homes. Or two hundred and eight quarter million dollar homes just to obtain a five percent minor reduction in. In the town tax. I met with the Town of Catskill assessor the other day. Here is another scenario based upon some full value assessments in Catskill, known as Catskill Commons. Walmart's full value, twenty-seven million. Lowe's, fifteen million. The mini mall, five million. The Bank of Green County, one million, seven hundred thousand. Mavis Discount Tire, two million. Burger King, one million, three hundred thousand. That totals to fifty-two million dollars. My questions for the developers are, will the end result of all of the real property improvements that you make after any exemptions or special tax treatment for condominiums? I'm going to stop right there for a minute. Condominiums get special tax treatment. When the condominium law came into being, it's 339 Y of the real property law, people who were buying and spending a lot of money on condominiums were unhappy with the amount of tax that they were paying based upon their market values and their, um, prices that they were paying for them. So what ended up happening with condominiums, um, was that condominiums, there could be fifty of them in a particular property, they could be all selling for a half million dollars each, but they have to be assessed for tax purposes as a unit whole. Which means they don't get valued as condominiums, they have to get valued as rental properties. Significant tax savings for condominiums. Okay, I don't know if I read this or not, but I'll read it again. Will the end result of all the real property improvements that you make after any exemptions or special tax treatment for condominiums or a single property valuation attributed to, uh, timeshares or rentals or an LLC be fifty-two million dollars? Will it be equivalent because of sales tax issue, I don't know how many people told me the great benefits of sales tax, which you may have read about in Porcupine Soup. Town of Carroll, Carroll Durham School District, Round Top Fire District, they don't see a penny of it. It all goes to the state, it goes to the county, um, the county, that's where that sales tax money goes because I worked in the budgeting process there and they do, um, every year they use that sales tax money to try and keep the levy down. Okay, getting back to the sales tax issue for a moment. To the, um, developers, how would you estimate that your sales tax revenues, which don't directly benefit anyone in town, compared to the sales tax revenues generated from Catskill Commons? It appears to me at this time that this project will have to be. It appears to me at this time that this project will have to be based upon some form of ownership subject to special tax treatment based in New York State law. One thing I heard countless times in my 30 years of service as Green County's Director of Real Property Tax was, well, we can do this like they do in Massachusetts or South Carolina or Florida. No, we can't because each state has different laws pertaining to property taxes. If all or part of the units in this proposal are going to be associated with some form of limited liability corporation ownership or rental or timeshares or condos, they will get special lower tax treatment in total or in part. These forms of ownership, I might add, under the best of circumstances can run into organizational issues after the initial developers transfor all of their interests and are no longer associated with the resort. I could share some of my experience regarding this exact thing. Some of the past, some from the past and some that sadly are headed down that road this very moment. In conclusion, I would suggest that no one should be promoting this project based upon a claim that it is going to reduce anyone's January property tax bill or its September school tax bill. Any minor reduction that could possibly be realized will more than likely be offset by added costs in municipal fire district and school taxes, possibly even assessment litigation. Based upon a previous writing of mine that appeared in Porcupine Soup, I would also discourage anyone from falsely claiming there is a reason to support this project based upon the benefit of sales tax revenue to Round Top, the Round Top Fire District, the town of Carrow as a whole, or the Carrow Durham School District. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bev Erin-Ye. My husband Dwight Tobin and I, we're relatively new to Round Top. We bought our house in 1991. We bought it because it's one of the most beautiful hamlets we've ever seen. Is that better? It's the most beautiful place we'd ever seen. And also, when we bought it, most people hadn't heard of it, which we kinda liked. In fact, we consider it centrally isolated and peaceful. It's hard to find a place like that that's only an hour from Albany, two hours from New York or three hours from Boston. When we moved here, there weren't any traffic lights in Carrow. And it was a real diner made from a car, from a train. I still walk with my dog off-leash on all the roads in Round Top. And if an occasional vehicle stops by, I hear it as it approaches, it's that quiet. That's one of the things that we really, really love about it. Yeah, Round Top is known for resorts, but so far, all of the resorts are locally owned, family-owned businesses. The people who own them and run them live right there. And yes, we would love a spa and restaurant near our property, that would improve our values, but this is really out of scale. It's out of scale with our surroundings, our ecology, our topography and our water supply. In fact, back in the 90s, the DEC allowed Blackhead Mountain Lodge the use of a large quantity of available water, which I'm tall, they didn't even use all of. But now, we have global warming, our streams have dried up, the water table has changed on our wells. In fact, I just found out that Round Top's planting zone has officially changed from four to five. The warm weather and the drying up is moving north. I did some other research because frankly, aside from all the plans and all the wonderful ideas they bring to us, I'm questioning the people in charge of this project. So I did a little research. They are Henry Cardamarch and Donald Chick, who as far as we know, don't even have a company, it's just the two names. If there is a company, we're not aware of it. And what kind of company, we don't know. But Cardamarch owns something called Our House Hotel Group. And by the way, there are only three properties in his portfolio. One of them is a recently renovated motel in Palm Springs. And the other two are renovated historic buildings in Nevada City and Green Valley, California. The other fellow, Donald Chick of DC Hospitality, owns a company that hosts events in Washington, DC at his sort of club restaurants. He had a little bit of construction management experience. Neither one displays any experience in being in charge of new construction. And these are the guys who want to build it. Six Senses would come in after the fact and manage it as a hotel group. But the people who are applying to build this, they have no experience in it from what I can see. So just to be sure, I called on a family friend. I lost my, I lost my, what I wrote, hold on. I called on a family friend. His name is Larry Silverstein. He built the World Trade Center and then rebuilt it with the Freedom Tower. And we asked him if he knew of these people. He belongs to all of these developers groups and real estate groups and he's on the boards and it was like, nope, don't know who they are. So, one other thing. In a recent project called One High Line in Manhattan, a new building right next to the High Line, Six Senses was supposed to be involved and they were thrown off the project, but I couldn't find out why, but it was kind of interesting that they were thrown out. So let me ask everyone a question, especially the board. Do we really want an experiment? Basically, their first big project out of the box, a project of this magnitude where they're gonna build a town within our town? It's also going to be managed by a company called Six Senses, which is based in Bangkok, Thailand. They are not an American company. They're doing everything long distance. They care about the bottom line? I don't think they really care about our community. And lastly, in worst-case scenario, if this does go through, I beseech the board to have them, to require them to get or post a completion bond. Thank you.
Apologies, I can't read the next person, but they signed in with doctor. Is there a doctor here? Maybe Polacek or-
He's reading a bit. He told me, um, I wanted that signature so I would feel confident because I don't know these are public boards. So the first person who spoke, the accountant, is he here?
Ellen, if you just, you gotta hold it pretty close here.
Okay, so the accountant who spoke first. I used a lot, I read all of his material online, including the porcupine thing. I didn't know that the, none of the 8% taxes would go to Round Top. I know that they're divided between 4% and 4% and the 4% goes to the town, I mean, the county of Green County. And I made up this little picture of actually, if we were to get any money, it would constitute that little red part of the green line. The green circle constitutes Green County and the amount of people in Green County. And that little red part is Round Top. So the amount of money that we would get would be infinitesimal. I spoke with Janice, who is the tax assessor, who's in the tax assessor's office, and I asked her, because there were a lot of figures given out last time and we couldn't hear a lot of them, but the two that I remembered were that one was traffic would be increased by 7%. When I mentioned that to her, she laughed because there is no way, I don't know how many trucks would be going up the road. I heard somebody said 600, somebody said something else, but I haven't seen 600 trucks going into Round Top. I bought my house in 2013, so I'm even newer than you. I haven't seen them in all this time. I've seen garbage trucks and I've seen oil trucks, but I don't really see trucks building houses. The other figure that I remember was that, that I was told that the taxes would go down and I was told by Janice, also the tax assessor, that our taxes would definitely go up because we would need extra policemen, we would need extra fire, we would need a lot of roadwork from the destruction that's gonna be done from the trucks and the traveling. And she somehow thought that because a helicopter might come in, it might not be as noisy as a plane. However, my husband was in Vietnam and he said that when he was on the helicopters taking people back and forth, you couldn't hear yourself think. I mean, a helicopter is much noisier than a plane because it's, has this little, I don't know, mix nest around the bottom and it just goes and goes. So I do wish that I could get a transcript of the comments of, of the proposals that were done last week so I could read through them and I would be more than happy to research and find out the rest of the incorrect statements because A, whoever said it was a city within a city will be a city within a city. I don't know how many households, I looked up the amount of households we have in Round Top, something like maybe 230 households. We have under 1,000 people living here. A city within a city of rich people who will not be providing any help to us and really couldn't give two bleeps about us will exceed that number many times over, that 900 figure that we, you know, we treasure our privacy and our land and we have had resorts here. But again, they have been family-owned and they haven't been disruptive to the community. They've all been in one place. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Mase?
Good evening, everybody. I would just like to correct you all, construction has begun, we all experienced it today. So thank you very much. And that's one of my questions, I would like to know if anything has been approved that work could begin up there at Blackhead. Today, I was pulling out of my driveway, I live on Blackhead Mountain Road, it's a very curvy spot on my property, and I was immediately confronted by a very large dump truck coming down the hill. I was able to get out of his way, there was not room on the road for him and for me. And all these trucks all day long have been going up Blackhead. The end result was that the Carrow Police Department had to show up because damage was done to private property. So you guys need to start paying attention. The other thing I'd like to address, excuse me, is the wastewater issue. I've done a lot of research on this. The unidentified stream that the wastewater system would dump into is in my backyard. It goes to the shingle kill. I've done research that there's a lot of indications that these systems fail on a regular basis. And when a system fails, raw sewage will be going directly to the town of Carrow's water supply, which means that water supply system will be shut down until it's corrected. You'll have raw sewage basically shed in your water system. And I will have it in my backyard. And in order to move it through my backyard, there has to be a heck of a lot of water on a regular basis, and there is not. So that sewage would be sitting in pockets, in the unnamed stream and in the shingle kill and in the water system. The other concern that I have is in the town of Woodstock and the town of Ulster, there is a proposal for a new development. It was originally called Woodstock Nation. That pretty much got killed because of the opposition. There's now a new proposal for a development that was just submitted in the last two weeks. That proposal also again covers both towns. The minute that they received it in the town of Ulster, the town of Ulster Planning Board Chairman contacted the town of Woodstock Planning Board Chairman and made him co-lead agency because he was concerned that it crossed over into two townships. It's only eight acres in the Woodstock parcel. The rest of it in the town of Ulster is almost 300. Part of that application from day one, 97 pages addressing waste, storm management, stormwater. We don't have a single page, nothing. There is not a complete application on this process. Things are starting to happen at Blackhead, nobody's watching. So I suggest that there needs to be some policing, there needs to be a lot of discussions, there needs to be a reality check with what's going on. So it's about time you people started holding these developers, these consultants, put their feet to the fire and demand that they give you the information that they need. Thank you.
I'm just gonna answer two questions quickly to the extent I can. One, this board has no enforcement ability or arm, so anything that's currently going on has nothing to do with us. Two, as far as I'm aware, there have been no permits issued, this board has not approved or issued anything. So I can just tell you what this board has done is, you know, with regard to if they have anything else, you can check with the building department, but to my knowledge, nothing's been issued for them to start construction.
Well, who has the authority then if you don't?
Joe Merlino?
I will ask the question then, who has the authority? Because I can see the construction through my window. Well, then code enforcement should be here. Or just allowing them to do what they want, when they want. And I'm not saying that it's you in general, but when does it end? I wasn't going to address that. What I was gonna address is, they stated there was no new development, no new business. I was in talks with a gentleman, I will keep his name private, for the property next to mine as of three weeks ago. Because I was worried about my property, which is in front line of this. And now the gentleman will not pick the phone up, so the rumor mill started. The rumor mill started and I was told they bought, the developers had bought the property for triple the value of what it was listed. I've grown up in Green County my entire life. I work very, very hard to maintain my home, which may not be a million dollar home. But aren't these developers just driving the people that lived in Green County out? What's next? Are you gonna force me to sell at a lower value? Because that's what's gonna happen. So I did an appraisal of my own home. I don't want to leave. But what's next? You're just gonna force me to sell at a fraction of what I paid for my house probably. After putting renovations in my own home. It's just disturbing that we're letting people come in and take over not just Round Top, Green County. They spoke of the Shingle Kill having water treatment pumped in or taken out. I was told by several people several years ago, a gentleman took some stones out of the creek to make hardscaping on his property. And he was fined, but we're okay with pumping sewage into it at times. So don't matter about the creek and the stones. But if you want sewage in the drinking water that I said last time is going to this school, then I guess allow them to. I just wish that more people listened and took this serious. Because you're forcing everybody that built homes here, bought homes here, out. And then what's gonna happen to the two hundred and fifty homes in Round Top? They're gonna be empty because no one's gonna be able to afford them. Thank you.
Ray Coates?
Hello, neighbors. I'm a relatively new resident here. My wife and I moved to Pearlings about five years ago. And we live at the base of Blackhead. And we moved here for the same reason a lot of you did, for the solitude, for the beauty. And it's been wonderful. And last month, I attended this same planning board session and learned a bit about this project sort of for the first time. I think I agree absolutely with all the concerns people have raised about the scale, sort of the disproportionate scale of this project as compared to the resorts that exist elsewhere. And the one thing that certainly stuck me or struck me as being an unusual and very concerning element of the project is the helipad approval. And so I looked a little bit into that to find out, you know, if you, if the planning board allows a helipad to exist on a property, what are the rules about that? And it turns out there aren't any. In New York State, if a helipad exists, there are no time of day, frequency, use constraints. It's completely up to the property owners to decide when helicopters can come and go. And I think there was a comment last time about battery-operated helicopters coming into vogue, how those are going to reduce noise. Well, those are only gonna have about a twenty or fifty mile range. So from the airports to here, those are not gonna play. And when you have a helipad, there's no restriction on the type of helicopters that can come and go. So right now, when I hear a helicopter, I think either there's an injured person or an emergency. And I'm totally good with that. I like hearing those helicopters. The type of noise that would come from a regular commute into this resort would be, in my mind, totally disruptive to the environment. It would change the value of living here for a lot of people. So my only question is to the planning board, what are the criteria that are used to determine whether a helipad is an acceptable component of a project like this? Thank you.
Jen Schwartz?
I'm just gonna start by following up on the tax assessment issue, which I thought was really interesting. But I think what's most, I went to the town board meeting on Monday of this week and was curious about the tax question as well. Because I wanted to know what type of revenue might the town get from this? And it's something a lot of people care about and talk about. And well, for one thing, a lot of the members of the town board said that they have not even read this application and they're not familiar with the project. So they were not able to speak, you know, to say anything about it. But they said there has been no assessment done. And so I think, you know, it's pretty clear that we don't know where the cards are gonna fall. And what I would really like to see is for the leaders, for everybody, but particularly the leadership in this town and every member on the planning board to not say anything otherwise. I think it's inappropriate to say that the tax revenue is gonna be a benefit when we practically speaking have no idea. And no one can have any idea until the data is done. I just wanna be clear, I wanna say this exactly. Right, so at the February planning board meeting, the reason why I think this is so important is because when we asked Joe about what this resort is going to bring to the town and how he sees it benefiting the town, he said, this is verbatim, it was recorded, "If it were to be approved and the resort were to be successful, I don't see the clientele leaving the property very often. I don't foresee them going to Main Street to get coffee. They aren't gonna come to my family's restaurant. The value of something of this scale is simple, creating tax revenue for the town of Cairo." So I just wanted to state that because I think it's irresponsible.
Can I just clarify at that point?
No, I think I'm gonna finish in the same way that you have not allowed us to ask questions. So that's it. I think we should all be responsible about what we say and understand that until any of those numbers have been done thoroughly, it's completely irresponsible for any of us, but especially our town leadership to suggest that we know anything about the tax revenue. Okay, so, right. The planning board represents us, not the developers. So as you all saw tonight, when someone comes in for a public hearing for any other project and they have told us many times that reviewing this project is the same as reviewing any other project, right? Why is it that the developers and the consultants do not have to answer any of our questions? Why is it that they can't respond to anything? I don't understand why the planning board is protecting the applicant. I can't understand that at all and it's completely inappropriate. In the same way that's inappropriate that when you post meeting minutes on the town of Cairo's website, you are posting documents created by the consultants that have been, where our names have been erased, where documents are missing. It is completely inappropriate that they are preparing documentation that is being submitted to the town of Cairo website under meeting minutes. And that needs to change. Okay, so frustratingly, we have no updated information. None of our, at least none of my comments have been responded to. And that's also one of the reasons why opening a public hearing prematurely like this is such a problem. We're running around trying to get as much information as we can and be thoughtful and understand how this is gonna affect us. And it's ultimately a huge waste of our time. Because we are dealing with a completely incomplete application. So how are we supposed to assess anything? So now here we are, trying to get information. And no more information has been provided. So, given that, and as far as I understand, it looks like no permits have been applied for with the DEC. There are ways to track that. But not just the, I don't know with the other involved agency, has any of the permits have been applied for? But as far as I can tell, they have not been. I understand that this application is relatively, you know, new in the context of us seeing it. But the idea that, you know, the consultants have no idea and it's new to them just isn't true. On some of the PDFs that they had sent to the planning board, you know, there's comment and markup from a year ago, March two thousand and twenty-three, with both of your names attached to it. So we know you've been working on this for at least a year. And so I think that the information, we should be able to ask basic questions about the application and get answers. I understand you're not getting into the granular details of the engineering, but on certain things, you should have to respond at a public hearing like this. And I think the planning board should make that possible and should actually demand that, because that's what you do for every other applicant. But since none of that has happened, I'm just gonna say a couple of things. Because I saw in the cover letter you submitted that the purpose of this meeting is to get information from us so that it can influence how you revise your submission. So I'm gonna take this opportunity to say a few things that I would like to see. Because I will repeat that it would be wonderful to have a resort on this site. But this resort, a few things. So obviously, no helipad. It's a red herring. We all know that. Let's just get rid of it, please. I would also like to note that you have said several times in the narrative that this is an incredibly environmentally friendly and sustainable developer. So if that's true, let's do something at a scale where there's no deforestation. You're looking at a golf course where it's already, already deforested. You have greenways. And I understand you need to cut down trees to do X, Y, and Z. But it's entirely possible for you to choose to do a development at a scale that doesn't mean you have to deforest at least eleven acres of mature forest. Otherwise, it's hypocritical.
Otherwise what?
It's hypocritical. Also, the effluent. If we're dealing with an ultra wealthy corporation or developers, there's absolutely no reason that it has to get discharged into the Shingle Kill or any water body. Work on a repackaging. I mean, this is not, this is not new technology, this is basic. And it's insulting to keep saying this is environmentally conscious when that's still going on. So I would also, like, no branded residences, no private ownership, where they're gonna be paying a fraction of the taxes that residences, residential people have to pay. If it's gonna be held in fee simple and it's private ownership, they can either be, forget the zoning, right? Let's say you can get away with that. They can either be taxed as individual, single-family dwellings, or you can't have them. Let's see. I would like for the development to, per the DEC letter and the steep slopes of this site, I understand that the impoundment of a lot of the water and rerouting streams and wetlands, even though we have no plan, no information, I'm gonna guess that that's part of your stormwater management plan and creating a giant detention basin. However, impounding and rerouting streams and wetlands is not something the DEC is likely to give you a permit for. And besides that, it's just another reason why this is just patently not environmentally friendly. So build something of a scale that doesn't require that kind of impoundment of water. What else is here? Oh, so since I live across the street, something that I thought you could do is, you know, the, I don't know if everyone's familiar with the land, but there's kind of like a field on Crow's Nest Road and there's the driving range on Bald Hill. And I thought it would be nice if both of those spaces could be converted into open space and even parkland that might even be publicly accessible. So you can have your e-res. But I think that that could be something you could do for the people who live here if truly the developers are concerned about fitting in with the community. I personally know that I would love to be able to walk onto those fields and just look at those mountains on a day like today. And I think a lot of our neighbors would love that. That would also give us an opportunity to not have to deal with heavy construction and visual impairment directly along the roads. I understand that the initial resort is still there. And I'm, you know, obviously within reason. But I think if you truly minimize the scale of what you're proposing and did the bulk of the development away from where everyone lives and didn't build a parking lot, like, one of the parking lots is like all deforestation of trees and that's just simply unnecessary. Make it smaller so that you don't have to do that. Okay. Right, so today I received a water report. I foiled for it a little over two weeks ago. I have, somebody said earlier, the tax guy, glutton for punishment. I've read through all of the zoning documents of this town and the zoning history since I was not around when the 2015 zoning law was made and about, what was it, eight years of resources that this town put into the creation of its first zoning law. So they did a wonderful job, right? They got a hydrogeologist from the New York Rural Water Association to put together a really in-depth report where they drove every street in Cairo and looked at exactly what the issues were with groundwater, with the aquifers, with how much the land can handle with sewage and water treatment. And it was a comprehensive report and it actually informed the amount of density for land development going forward. Now unfortunately, what happened, and a lot of you probably already know this, is that after all this work and presumably a lot of money that this town spent in taxes, as soon as that new zoning law was put into play, we had a new supervisor who undid all of it. There was a board, a commission, Joe was on it, to rework that zoning law. And it was slaughtered. It was, it's now a third of its size of what it was. And the reason that's important, wait, hang on, hang on, I gotta get, again, I wanna be exact. Okay. There's a lot of things in the 2015 zoning law that would have completely prevented anything like this from happening. The density regulations, which are informed by that hydrogeology report, mean that you would never be allowed to build this many structures on that land. Why? Because we don't have enough water. And the water doesn't drain fast enough because of the bedrock. And because there's not, we have to worry about how you can clear away sewage and effluent so that it doesn't affect groundwater. All of these things are based in science and based in local reporting and all of them were erased. So now we're dealing with a zoning law that doesn't take any of that into effect. If it had, none of this would be feasible. I'm just gonna read you one more thing from the zoning law because I found it personally fascinating. This resort is gonna be located in a zoning area that's called Mountaintop Residential. Any of us in Round Top, a lot of us live there. The definition for Mountaintop Residential in the 2015 zoning law is this. "To allow for residential and recreational oriented development in a manner consistent with the character and environmental sensitivities found in the mountainous areas of Cairo, including but not limited to scenic views, ridge lines, steep slopes, and wooded hillsides." The 2017 definition of Mountaintop Residential. "To promote a scope of residential development that is consistent with the existing historical use and scope of the district and to promote commercial development in a manner that is consistent with the established resort and tourism character of the district." So we went from having a zoning regulation that was about residential and conservation to promoting development and especially commercial development. There was no commercial development clause in the 2015 definition. And you have Joe and the other members of the committee to thank for that. Okay, I'm almost done. Right, so the zoning. So the zoning definitions aside and, you know, I, because they were based in science and we're all asking about water, it was one dwelling per three acres. And that is one- And that is once you subtract a whole bunch of features from the landscape. So, I think this might be in some of the reports already, but it's not broken down at this scale. I think 45% of that property, of the lot, is over 15% slopes. And over 15%, you cut out 50% of that for the density regulations, over 25%, you don't include it at all. So I'm curious to know what percentage of the slopes on the property are over 25%. You also exclude any water bodies, so I would like to know, I think that's six, over six acres, with the way you're going to impound water, all wetlands, not just federally designated wetlands, and the 100-year floodplain. I will just add that, as somebody mentioned this before, but as a science journalist, and also because I am a person who can observe things like the rest of you, we all know that the theme of flood maps and floodplains are completely ridiculous, that we've had a couple 1,000-year storms in just the past five years in terms of flooding. So whatever those numbers are, given the amount, again, of resources these developers have, and how they say they're environmentally friendly, there are tools out there by NOAA and other parts of the government and other private institutions that help you assess what the true flood risk is. And I would like to see this most cutting-edge technology put into use with actual flood risk. Okay. Oh, one very specific thing, but I'm curious about this, is in the February planning board meeting, Joseph had mentioned that this project might be constructed in stages. He said that the resort portion would happen maybe first, and then the bottom part with the residences would happen second. In the EIF, you said it was only going to be, or it said multi-phase, and the answer was no. But I think that is a critical piece of information that we have to have clarity on, in addition to obviously all the construction timelines. But, you know, that's kind of one example that, where there's discrepancies that need to be addressed. So to wrap this up, I'm gonna say something that I talked to some of the town board members about, which is that I think anyone who, I think a lot of people in this room have gone pretty deep into this application, and have looked at the developers, looked at the intent, looked at the financial elements, looked at how, if ultimately this is going to be owned in a corporate structure, where there are, it's publicly held, and there are shareholders, you better believe they are going to be taking every effort they can, by law, because they have to maximize their profits for shareholders. That means they're going to be challenging the tax assessment, they are going to be trying to get out of everything as much as possible, and we need to know if that is how this is ultimately going to be operated and managed. And here's why. I understand that I'm newer to this place, and I don't understand a lot of things about this town and its history, and what's important to people. But what I can bring is my own knowledge, which is that developers like this, which are unlike anything this town has ever seen, are going to take advantage of us. Like, you think I'm annoying? Just wait until you have a multinational corporate overlord breathing down your neck, not just you, but the town board. And I don't think, or I don't know if you realize, how much that is going to hamstring any efforts that you have, or that anyone in the community wants to have. They're going to have, they're gonna own this town. And what I don't want to see, in many ways, they've come here and they've chosen this land, not because they love Round Top so much, they care about the community, but because we have lax zoning, and because they know we're thirsty for development, and they want to roll all, they want to just steamroll all over us. And I don't want to see us be suckers. I really don't. And I think we have to remember that. So everyone who is holding them to account, that is what they expect, that is the right thing to do, and I just hope that everyone can keep that in mind. It's been said a couple of other times, this is not a family business. This is something unlike anything we've ever seen, and frankly, nothing like this even in the Catskills. These are not gonna be people from the city coming up here. This is gonna be people flying in from Singapore and Dubai, because the Hudson Valley is becoming a brand name. It has nothing to do with Round Top, and nothing to do with Caro. So this is extractive, and we need to push back as much as possible.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Been vegan real estate all of my adult life. I'm hearing from a lot of potential businesses that want to come to Caro. We're not business-friendly, we're negative in promoting new business. As far as addressing the old zoning law, it was a total nightmare. It needed to be done and redone, because it was totally affecting new business coming into this town. It was so restrictive, and over-restrictive compared to other towns, so we made it more business-friendly, but it's not a lax zoning law, it's in line with other towns in the New commercial business in Caro will increase sales tax, and it will help the county tax load, which we all share. Increasing commercial tax base will help the town tax base as well. The new developers are not asking for a tax base, nor should they be given one. They should pay their fair share of taxes, and whatever that assessment will be, will be borne by them to help with our tax load. So, will they be the only business that we want to come in? No, we should have other businesses coming in to help with the tax load. Surrounding properties in Round Top will not decrease, they will increase. So, what is too big, and what is too small? Enough to be small enough, is to be decided by the planning board with input from concerned taxpayers like us, as well as the owners developing, all of which have equal rights. When it comes down to it, when someone comes into town and asks for a business to be approved, yes, we should hold them accountable, especially something of this size, and I agree, it probably should be smaller. But, when it's all said and done, and they do all of the things that are necessary, which, or many, they have to look at the planning board, do they approve it or not? Because like I said, we have rights, but so do they. So we have to balance those. The Bank of Green County last year pledged $5 million of low-interest money to increase development in Caro. So, let's not scare business away, let's bring business to the town, so that we can help with increasing our tax base. Round Top has always been a resort community. We have a resort that will increase the tax base and stay on the tax rolls, instead of other resorts that have sold to buyers, where they've been taken off the tax rolls. I met my wife in the 70s as a cocktail waiter at Pine Springs. Pine Springs is long gone, but Pine Springs, the location, still operates as a resort, just a different kind of resort that charges the people that come up a fee to stay there and enjoy the resort, but it's off the tax rolls, and it's tax exempt. The days of Pine Springs and many older-time resorts are long gone. In order to attract new resorts, a new model is being proposed. The idea that 200 or 300 people staying at a resort will not shop in Caro is absurd. Do you go somewhere for a week and not check out anything around? Talk to the people who have business on Main Street, Caro, get some input from them. Should we be concerned and look at it carefully? Yes. The planning board has hired an engineer to be paid by the developers, who will oversee the concerns brought up, and there's many good concerns that have been brought up by all of you. New York DEC will further look at this subject, and all the concerns brought up, and must sign off on that, as will the New York State Department of Health with regard to looking at water before approval. I know this very well, because I've dealt with DEC and the Department of Health all my life in running apartments, and let me tell you something, they're not gonna just sign off on this project without looking at it very, very carefully. It's time to be business-friendly. What is too large and what is too small should be decided. But we should be business-friendly, like I said, and save Caro business and promote new business. Caro is the crossroads of Green County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for trying to get a good mic, and for actually succeeding now, and for, and your service. It is service that you do. And we need you on our side, so I'm gonna be really nice to you, too. I didn't come with anything prepared, I've just been listening and taking down some notes, and so I'm gonna be scared and segmented, which is what I'm afraid they might be trying to do, is segment a project if they're going to be building one part and then build another part. With CICRA, you cannot segment projects if it's all one thing, so you have to be very careful of that. I do wonder if any of this is on the DEC Environmental Notice Bulletin? Have there been permits applied? And, you know, this is the second meeting I've come to where people are asking questions and we're getting absolutely no answers for once. It should be really simple. Is there anything on the DEC ENB about this project? The Environmental Notice Bulletin? They're not answering, no. So, regarding, somebody was talking about the water crossings and the water things, it's the Army Corps of Engineers, and it is in Army, it is a military thing. They're going to have to apply to the Army Corps of Engineers for a lot of this water stuff. And I don't know if any permits to the Army Corps of Engineers have been submitted. I live, I get my water from the Shingle Kill. It's already poisoned by, unfortunately, by the poor fire training facility with the PFAS. Luckily for those in Blackhead, that's downstream from you guys. But we don't need any further poisoning in the Shingle Kill, which feeds both of the wells for the town, for the village one. So, I mean, we really need to keep our water clean. Somebody said we love this place because we love the solitude, and we love the beauty, and the filthy, filthy, filthy rich also love the beauty, and they want the solitude, and they only want it for a little bit, to come in on a helicopter and take this little tiny bit of solitude, when they can get, they could go all over the world looking for these beautiful little spots. So I really am not against a resort, I'm not against business, but I'm against being taken advantage of. And, again, I'm going to ask again, because I asked the last time, if you are testing for PFAS of any kind in this water? And according to the open meeting slots, when they were up here with their maps and their folded-up papers, and they folded them up so that nobody could see them back in here, open meeting law says that we should be able to see every single piece of paper that is presented at a public meeting. So we should have been able to see those pieces of paper that they folded up, which showed their plans for this development. And I didn't see it, I didn't see if there's been any changes, if there's been any diminishment in these plans. And if we are, to go back to the hypocritical point about environmental, about environmental concerns, which there are some good ones in your plan, cutting down trees, trees are the best carbon sink in the world, and we need the carbon sinks, and taking down any old growth is just beyond the pale. We cannot cut down any old growth trees at all anymore. We have to keep those in place. Thank you for listening, and I'm sorry, I'm really so scared, but I really do appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mary.
Hey, everyone. I want to thank the planning board, for, especially for saying that you're working with us and for us, that means a lot to me. One of the things I heard very early in these conversations was whispering off-record that this project was gonna happen no matter what we say. That scared the shit out of me. Because why are we here, wasting our time if it's gonna happen no matter what? I just want to say, that didn't serve anybody. So when I moved to Round Top, I had a dream of providing pristine beauty, clean air, untouched wild forest, to artists who need an amazing reprieve from urban stress. I have no real idea about what Round Top was about, and I was very naive, but I was, I knew I was entering a community, and that the impact that I might have, I instinctively knew should remain very light. My company, so I have a dance company, and a not-for-profit dance company, we pay over $30,000 in taxes for our property. My company put 77 of those 170 acres into conservancy that are adjoining the Catskill Reserve. And I did that to expand the footprint of the Catskill Reserve. Because my board, I'm not bragging, but I can see that when my board saw that resource as a monetary thing, I realized that I had to move very quickly, and these are my friends. I had to move quickly to get it into reserve, so that it wouldn't get sold off to who knows what, who knows what. So, look, I'm not bragging, but that's my idea of protecting and honoring the community. By the way, the Petronio Residency Center does free dance classes throughout Green County schools. We taught over 4,000 kids last year. That's what I think serving the community means, so I'll just mention that to the developers, if you want to start listing the things that you can do for us. When a project of this scale is proposed, the debate is intense, it has significant repercussions. I don't believe that developers have any real sense of what they're going to do to our community. We're being dangled a few deliverables in terms of taxes and ideas about maybe inviting people to the restaurant to spend money, or medifact possibilities with a helicopter, but other than that, they haven't really considered the use of the resources they will hoard, let alone the fragile borderline between their property and the Catskill Park, a public treasure. They see that property as a, they see that prized untouched forest as a trophy to sell to the most elite purchasers. So this is not a political stance, this is an environmental mandate. Stewarding this precious intersection with protected state land is an environmental necessity, and this is one way to shape the planning for a good community that has a whole sense of where it's going. Size matters, scale matters, connection to the community matters, the environment around the edge of the Catskill Park matters, the wildlife and flora that interface Blackhead and the adjacent The wildlife and flora that interface Blackhead and the adjacent preserve matter. Noise matter, matters, light matters. The reality of our water supplies, thank you Jen, matters. The contamination of our supplies matters, thank you Mace. Speaking to the community about what fits within this aesthetic matters. Dropping something this size and thinking that it's going to help us is really, it's very insulting. It matters when members of the planning board, okay, I said that already. I just wanted to say that this is an unprecedented project. This is a glass ceiling. And if this project gets approved at this scale, it's going to happen over and over and over again. And so, you know, what do I want? One-third of the size and no helicopter. So I see an ecosystem that needs to be protected and preserved for a very, very long time. Last summer, we had the most unusual thing happen. We were choked out by forest fires coming from Canada. That's not an aberration. That's going to be happening regularly. And what we have underneath us in terms of water is limited. And, you know, this is not the 70s. This is not, we can't go back to some idealistic notion of what, unlimited resources to support whatever dream, whatever fantasy that we want because we can afford it. We, as a community, have to be responsible for the precious resources that we have at Round Top. And I came here for the quiet, but I think the reason that we're here tonight is because we want to protect those resources. These plans are profit-driven. Resource-draining, tax-abating vehicles. They are a mirage that has no real relationship to what happened with Round Top or the Cairo community. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. I have one more person signed up, which is Brenda. If there's anybody else who wants to speak after Brenda, please come up and sign up. Brenda?
All right, hi, everybody. Okay, really what I want to do is kind of, I thought I was going to drill down on the things that I already had some radar up about. And those were mostly our services because up where we are, and I'm not talking water. There are better people that are smarter about the water issues than I am. But what I am concerned about are the police, the traffic, the fire. And guess what we experienced all just today in front of Mace's house? We experienced not a car being able to pass a dump truck that, according to her, has already done some damage? I'm going to assume to either one of the ditches or the rock walls? And we, nothing? Okay, so, okay, close there on the road. But the point was, one of my biggest issues is you're trying to run a delivery entrance on a seriously narrow road. That's very delicate. It's got these delicate, old, hundreds of years old, rock walls. I think they're not going to last long. And I say today was just an example of it. And when did it happen? Okay, in the morning, when we had slush and ice. I got up last, when I was here a month ago and said, "Oh, I slid down that hill backwards on the wrong conditions." I'd hate to have to do that because I got slammed into that dump truck coming back down because I wasn't expecting it, but they'll be irregularly there. Oh, and what had to be called already? The police. That doesn't happen on a road like, I don't know, almost ever. I had an issue about also the amount of fire calls that might start happening up there. Aside from the fact that I'm not, I didn't even think about, oh my God, state land? Fire hazard there? Wildfires? Because they seem to happen everywhere else in America now with the woodlands and the drought problems and climate change. So I use it as an example. I had heard, so that was hearsay, that they had these real increased amounts of fire calls up in Wyndham at the new whatever, Wilder House. It used to be the Thompson House. So I thought it was, I heard two a day. No, it's not two a day. It was supposedly our town supervisor checked with Ray Himmel, who checked with them up there, and apparently it's two a week. I would like to know from the residents of Round Top, how many times you've heard of fire truck? In five years? The last year? Ever? 15 years? I checked with my son. I might forget. I never, I could have been gone that one day. But we do not get two fire trucks, especially up that nice little delicate road when no one's expecting them on a regular basis, twice a week. And sorry for the fact, I think that must cost some money. So all these things are just like happening to give us an example of like the hysteria that I was already, you know, my radar was up about. So, that being said, I want to respond that the local town code, zoning code for the town of Catskill is 102 pages. That little tiny area. Ours is what, 61? Used to be 150. You know, that zoning code that was going to protect us from this. So it is no longer comparable. Let's see, what else do I want to say? Okay, oh yes, one of the peeves I've had all along, asbestos. Ours had the town board meeting the other day and apparently somebody has pulled out who wanted to buy multiple buildings in the town of Cairo to rip them down because he was some demolition guy from, I'm sorry, New Jersey, who doesn't even know demolition rules and asbestos rules for the state of New York. I corrected him. 99.9, every commercial property has to have an asbestos survey, irregardless of the age. Nowhere in that application, that 191-page application that held up as a visual aid, do they mention anything about asbestos for any part of this. So they want to just go ahead and buy it and, you know, go through all this expense and problem and time. But what, they want to ignore the asbestos that is in fact there? Next to my, where I live. Okay? This guy pulled out because he is, he was like, he thought, oh, every place in New York is like New Jersey. You know, we can self, I wouldn't equally, self-survey for asbestos. No, not in New York. You can do that if it's a residence in New York or single residence, you can do that. That's an exclusion. You cannot do that on a commercial property. And finally, Mary Jo Courts mentioned, oh, DOL and DOH. Yes, because DOL, not DOH, is the one that handles licensing and permitting and checking on whether asbestos being remediated or not and properly, and oversees it. Okay? So that's just been left out and I've resented it this whole time. Because I'm the closest to that damn asbestos. Okay, so that being said, let's see. Traffic, okay. So this was the last thing, and I was questioned by someone online, "How do I see all this traffic?" Because from my porch in my front window, I literally, especially at this time of year, I see everything. I see two roads and an intersection with binoculars. Why? Because I'm a birder. I've always got my binoculars on my arm. Okay? We, I asked Mace to please count some cars. On a long day, she counted from 5:30 in the morning to around 4:00 in the afternoon. She counted 33 cars. 12 of them were from here, I mean, from residents up there, and they were round trips. That's it. We don't ever have much more than that. When the resort operated, they wonder, "How did I know how much came and go?" I worked there for a season. One. Two, I can see the entrance from my window. My porch, my stoop, my driveway, completely. That is just what I've always looked at. 50 cars, if you count how many parking spots there are. Six in the upper lot, on one side maybe seven and seven. So what, that's 14, 15 cars squeezing a motorcycle? How many could you fit on the front, the main parking lot? And I'm going to say 20? 20? So where are we, 35 cars? Where did they stash all the rest of these cars for all these people that are staying there and using the resort? I didn't see it in 15 years. They could do more, but not the kind of amount of traffic they want to pull up there. The roads can't handle it. We've already seen an example of what the problems can be on a teeny, tiny, little, one-day scale. Let's see if there's anything else I want to bring up. Let's see, the fire calls, the police, the asbestos, the traffic, yeah. So, by the way, this engineering firm that's been hired, they've excluded the traffic study. They will not do that. That's a separate contract. So that's another bill they're going to get. It's not just the $25,000 that they've already agreed to pay for Lamont engineers. So there's going to be an additional charge for a traffic survey from who we don't know. They're not going to do the endangered species, cultural resource investigation. I would like to know if that includes our rock walls. That is part of the historic culture of the area. They're not to be overlooked. They're not to be given over to the developers to tear apart and sell stone by stone because that's the thing they do in New England. I can, we can, I happen to list articles that that can be looked up. Go to the University of Connecticut, they have the Rock Wall Project. A whole-funded project in the university about this issue that's being tearing apart little by little because people aren't paying attention. That's culture. That's heritage. That's historic. The endangered species, yeah, we have more than two things to worry about. We have, I'm sure, more than a bat and a butterfly. That was all that was mentioned in the previous, in their submission priorly. By the way, talking about submissions and process and writing, I did a letter to this board, to this board about traffic. Because, okay, and I should be able to prove me my own work? No, I worked in a lawyer office for 15 years. You never got to proofread your own deed or anything important. If the other secretary didn't prove with you, the lawyer proves with you. I had to prove my own work. I had to make three corrections to that letter because I wanted to be so precise. And I delivered three times the original and two corrections to this board. How many times, how much, how many pages have they corrected in that application? And submitted in, what, three months? None. I did that in three days because every time I went back and delivered, I went, "Oh my gosh, I need to change that word." Well, I went back and did it. I can eat a little heat. I don't think they can. I think that about covers my comments for today. I've drilled in as much as I can. I think everybody really needs to really understand. Oh, one more thing. As our neighbor, our gentleman neighbor over here talked about, they're literally, I came in, one of my comments at the beginning of all this, I don't know if I made it in my comments last time I was here, was developers eat. They're like Pac-Man. They just come in and they eat a little more, leave a little more, leave a little more. And he can't get a call back from property that's next to him because the guy has already contracted, apparently. They will shoehorn around his house until he has to sell. He won't want to sell. He'll feel bad about selling, even if he gets a few dollars because it will let his neighborhood down, that he got chased out. That's what they do. That's what developers do. They eat until there's nothing left. Nothing that originally stood. No people that originally were from there. They will eat until they're all gone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brenda. Dwight?
Okay, it's late. I'll be really, really quick if I can. There's something called blockbusting, which you alluded to, where people come in, overpay for a property. And then they overpay for another property. And all of a sudden, the other properties are worthless. Now, most of us are here in Round Top because we like the peace and quiet. We like the nature. What do you think is going to happen with, what, two years? Three years of development? The noise, the traffic that's going to come in? And what's going to happen to your property values? If some, does someone want to buy a house next to two or three years, maybe four years of heavy construction? We don't know how long it's going to take. Let me leave you with one other thought. My interpretation, my feeling of what the zoning, the intent of the zoning to bring business to Cairo was to bring back the commercial businesses along Main Street. Not a massive development like this. Let me also, let me also leave you with the old joke. Do you know how, when a developer is lying? How can you tell when a developer is lying? When the lips move.
Thank you, Dwight. Can I get a motion to end the meeting? Alan? So the public hearing will remain open and will be adjourned until the next month. Thank you, everybody, for your comments.